Okay, at this time, we will call together the Garden Grove City Council meeting. Ms. Palmway, could you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Phan?
Here.
Mayor Protham Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Broadwater?
Here. Okay, at this time, we will have the invocation. Oh, Kingsley and Deanna Nguyen will be doing the flag salute.
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your fate. Heavenly Father, we ask for your presence over this council meeting. We ask that your hand guide the discussions and the decisions made here this evening for the benefit of everybody in the city of Garden Grove. Amen.
Amen. Please face our flag and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's my understanding that we have a... Well, first of all, I need to report before we get into the ball to that. We had two study sessions, two things, and before this evening, we started the meeting, and the city council directed staff to come back with a contract between the Vietnamese community of Southern California and the city of Garden Grove for a Tet Festival. We have presentations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our first spotlight is to recognize Tom Braddock for his years of service to the Shakespeare Orange County, and Kingsley O'Carrikey will give the presentation on this.
Thank you, Mr. Fattell. Mr. Mayor, tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to shine the community's spotlight on an incredibly dedicated individual who has spent the last 34 years serving as director for Shakespeare Orange County. With the founding artistic producing director of Shakespeare Orange County, Thomas Braddock, please step forward. Tom has always had a passion for the arts. He attended California State University Long Beach, obtaining a bachelor's of arts degree, and later his master's of theater arts. He spent a theater professional... He has been a theater professional for over 40 years, currently working as associate professor for the Department of Theater at the College of Performing Arts at Chapman University. As a Garden Grove resident, Tom founded the Garden Grove Shakespeare Festival in 1979, guiding it through a 13-season tenure where he produced and directed 110 productions, including A Midsummer Night's Dream and The Merchant of Venice. In late 1991, Tom established Shakespeare Orange County at Chapman University, launching its first season in 1992 with productions of The Winter's Tale and Hamlet at the Waltmore Theater. After 12 seasons, the company moved to Garden Grove's outdoor festival amphitheater in 2004. This past summer marked the 22nd season of classical theater under the stars. It continues to be the county's only professional stage company. Tom's productions have been recognized by regional and national publications, including The Los Angeles Times, Orange County Magazine, Los Angeles Weekly, and The Orange County Register. He is the founding director of Shakespeare Theater Association, an international service organization for theaters dedicated to producing Shakespeare, and has served as the organization's president. He is also on the Performance Advisory Board for Internet Shakespeare Editions, University of Victoria, Canada. Tom's 34 years directing Shakespeare OC has distinguished him as one of the longest-tenured artistic directors in Southern California theater scene. It is without a doubt his devotion and support for the arts and classical theater that has made Shakespeare Orange County a success, and Tom a recognized icon in the community. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Tom with a beautiful crystal memento in recognition and appreciation of his extraordinary years of service to Shakespeare Orange County. Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you very much.
One, two, and take one more. One, two, and three.
Thank you very much, Mayor Broadwater and city council, city staff, for this lovely gift and memento. I want to thank the city of Garden Grove for the opportunity, and I'm a 30-plus-year resident homeowner. My wife, Anne Barrelay, who's sitting here, is a Bolso Grandi High School graduate of '72, graduated from UC Davis and Chapman University with her master's degree, and is currently, well, just recently, the visual and performing arts coordinator at Sierra Intermedia School in Santa Ana. And my daughter, both of my daughters graduated from Garden Grove High School. One was Argonaut, most worthy Argonaut, and the other one was Argonaut of the Year. So Garden Grove has been very good to me. And a couple of things that you may not have heard about during... I estimated that during the 22 years that I was in Garden Grove doing Shakespeare, that over 200,000 people witnessed those plays at the Gem Theater in the festival amphitheater, that thousands of college students and high school students have interned, apprenticed, and had summer work study during that time period. Thousands of people were employed. And that Garden Grove's name is known throughout the English-speaking world and beyond as a center for Shakespeare. And it couldn't have happened without the support, encouragement, at times troubled times, but for the most part, it was a great opportunity, and I want to thank you all for that. And Garden Grove has really been my home, and I appreciate being here and raising my family in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's my understanding that Shakespeare is going to continue in Garden Grove?
That's what I understand, and I think that's great, and I hope you'll continue to support it, and I think John Walcutt will bring it back and make it even larger and more successful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So my understanding, we have another presentation this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and this is a tribute to Superior Court Judge John No on his retirement, and Mr. O'Carrikey will give a presentation on this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fattell. We do have a resolution, and I read that. Whereas at the age of 16, John Nguyen, his family and more than 1 million North Vietnamese made their way south away from communist forces following the petition of Vietnam per the 1954 Geneva Accord. More than 20 years later, he made his second escape from communism by boarding a helicopter on the roof of the American Embassy an hour before the fall of Saigon on April 30, 1975. And whereas the first in his family to be college-educated, John put his engineering degree in forestry to use as an infantry officer in the Army of the Republic of Vietnam. He later served on the National Assembly of South Vietnam, where he was elected as an Associate Justice on the Constitutional Special Supreme Court of South Vietnam, dedicating himself to spreading political economic justice while enacting some of the most important land reform bills in Vietnam. And whereas arriving at a refugee center at Camp Pendleton after his flight from the U.S. Embassy, he soon found a job as a handyman's assistant while completing his MBA from Cal Poly Pomona. In 1991, he earned his Juris Doctor degree from Western State University College of Law, passing the bar exam the same year. And whereas he began his legal career as a deputy public defender, later deputy attorney general for the California Department of Justice, in July 2000, he was appointed to the Supreme Court of California in Orange County by Governor Gray Davis, the first Vietnamese-American judge in Orange County, from where he officially retired on September 25, 2013. And whereas his humanitarian endeavors include aiding in the resettlement of more than 1,000 Southeast Asian refugees in the United States, and honors that include 2001 induction into the Western State University College of Law Hall of Fame, 2001 Lifetime Achievement Award from the Sister City Association of Garden Grove, and named Judge of the Year in 2005 by the West Orange County Bar Association, and in 2008 by the Orange County Asian American Business Association. Now therefore be it resolved that Garden Grove City Council thus hereby venerably honor Judge John No Trung Nguyen on the occasion of his retirement, commending his professional career, humanitarian actions, and inspirational life story. Congratulations.
Judge Nguyen, I'd like you to come, and I'd like you to bring your wife Bang with you also. Please come on up here. Here is on the top. It's for you to hang up. Put that when you feel like doing something other than reading a book. Wish you well.
Thank you.
Why don't you turn around and get the picture taken? Judge Nguyen, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Madam Mayor Protham, honorable council members, and Miss Director of the Finance Department of the City of Garden Grove, and Madame City Clerk, and Mr. City Manager, and I believe there is a city attorney over there. It's a wonderful opportunity for me to be here in these chambers of the City of Garden Grove Council, City Council. A couple of days ago, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, I met Mayor Broadwater, and he asked me, "So how is thing going with you?" So I said, "I'm retiring." He said, "Why? What will you be doing with your time?" As I can tell you right now, I'm late to this wonderful evening because I'm so busy, really, really busy, you know? In addition to the fact that the freeway needs more work to enlarge or to have more public transportation for the people to move around in the city and the county. But anyway, I want to thank Mr. Mayor, Madame Mayor Protham, and council members, many of you whom I have known for a long times and who have become my dear friends, in particular, Mayor Broadwater. When I applied to become judge on the bench 13 years ago, I mean, actually, 14 or 15 years ago, Mayor Broadwater was then a mayor, and he was one of the key persons to move my application forward in the governor's office. I thank you very much for your wonderful recommendation to the governor in my appointment to the bench. And Council Steve Johns, dear friend of mine, we have known each other for a long time, and I truly appreciate your friendship and your service to the people of Garden Grove. And of course, Madame Mayor Protham, Deanna Nguyen, we knew each other for a long time in Huasi work in the court at the West Justice Center. We share the same last name. And probably she and I were the ones who pronounced our name most correctly. And people call me by... My last name is Nuyen, Nigan, or whatever that they might come up with. So we have something really dearly in common, not only the last name, but we have something that we understand each other, which has the same vision in our future, in the future of the community. And Mr. Beard, congratulations for being a member of the city council. I haven't had the chance to work with you, but I heard that you work together well with the other council members to move the agenda of the city forward, and I thank you for that. Chris Phan is my adopted son. Is that right, Chris?
Yes, yes, Dad.
And we are proud of you, Chris, proud of your service to the country as a Navy Lieutenant Commander. You symbolize the spirit of Vietnamese-American service to the country. And as you left the service in the Navy, you began a new service as a deputy attorney, and now as a city council, and I'm so proud of you. I'm very proud of you, and particularly as an adopted son. Keep doing your good work and continue to serve the people of the city of Garden Grove and the people of the United States of America. Mr. Mayor and honorable member of the city council, on behalf of my wife, my children, and all the people who are here with me, my friends and many who are not here, I want to thank each and every one of you for your kindness in giving me this recognition. Your friendship is worth more than anything else. And I want to thank the city attorney, the city manager, and deputy city clerk, and Mr. Director of Finance for your kindness in allowing to share some moment of your busy calendar today, tonight with you. Thank you so much. Good... And I want to thank everyone here for sharing the... Especially those who have business in front of the city council to allow me a few minutes of your time. I recognize you as a person who volunteers every day to serve the people of Orange County.
The first time we met, you almost put me in jail.
But I did not because I didn't do anything wrong. I didn't do anything wrong. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We're going to take five minutes.
My son is here as well.
Can we take a picture?
Yeah.
Everybody else?
One, two, three.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
We'll go to public comments, and that'll be comments from anybody who wants to speak before the city council or before the successor agency. And the first speaker will be Brenda Calvia.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Brenda Calvia, and I want to address the council and the audience about the vote that you had last month about the coyotes, about trapping and killing the coyotes. Hopefully, you did a lot of homework on this because it's a well-known fact that when coyotes are trapped, they're killed when they're relocated. They die because they don't know what the water source, they don't know the food source. So if you're going to mandate this, please let the residents know about what's happening to our city. With the expansion of the freeway, we're moving all the animals that have been here for decades, for hundreds of years. We have to learn how to coexist. And if the vendor has taught you into trapping and killing the coyotes, that's a waste of tax dollars, and everybody should know what's going on. I have a one-page sheet that can be placed in all the libraries outside, and it talks about coexisting with coyotes. And that's all I have to say on the matter, so please reconsider about trapping and killing. It does not work. It makes the problem a lot worse. It's a waste of tax dollars.
Kelly Kramer.
Good evening, city council members and Mayor Broadwater. I'm a resident of Garden Grove, and I am too speaking about the coyote kill. I am opposed to this. I believe that the public needs to be educated and be responsible to prevent coyote conflict and to coexist. I believe that the coyotes, coyote kills are ineffective, cruel, and there are other alternatives that should be exercised. Other wildlife or other animals can be innocent bystanders in the kill. As a taxpayer, I don't want my tax funds funding cruel and ineffective projects, and if the kill proceeds, I will do everything I can so that the three votes that did get this enacted, you guys will not be... Or we will not be reelected, and that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Stephen Johns, Kurtz Gibb... Two people here. Kurtz Gibbons, Gibson.
Good evening, council. Sorry if my partner here passed you some paperwork.
Please give it to the clerk.
Hello, my name is Stephen Johns.
I'm Curtis Gibson.
We are here before you tonight because we want to move our business onto Main Street Garden Grove. We are owner, part owners of... Co-owners of Black Umbrella Art Studio. Our studio is of many arts and mostly tattooing and painting. Our desired location is on Main Street, which is currently not zoned for tattoo studios. We would like to first start off by telling you why we've opened Black Umbrella almost about a year ago in the city of Huntington Beach. We've been friends for over seven years now in the tattoo industry. We've learned from the same person. We've worked in different tattoo establishments in Orange County, and our goals are a little bit now different than those establishments that we have worked in. We want to provide a welcoming environment where artwork could flourish. I believe we have succeeded in the last year of doing so. We have accomplished this with our family and friend-oriented personalities, and we all know that customer service and treating your clientele with the most up-respect and the greatest viability is most important to us. We also want to, through our business, it is part art gallery and part tattoo studio as well. We define ourselves as fine art, tattoo arts artists. It is considered nowadays not small-time, but definitely in the mainstream, I think, definitely in youthful culture. We define ourselves as fine artists, and it is truly one of the finest arts on the platforms that we do that you really cannot mess up. This is one-time thing, you got to get it right, and we take ourselves in the most serious way of that.
I've lived in Garden Grove for over 25 years. My wife has also lived here for over 22. She was an Argonaut and actually worked at Kay's Kitchen for a period of time. We still live in Garden Grove. We actually live just north of Main Street, and we both attend church, Living Spring, and we've seen the community around here change over the years, and we want to be a catalyst for the next change. With the Reimagine Downtown, this has sparked an interest in being a part of the change for downtown. We also have paint nights every Friday night currently, and we plan to keep that going when we move our business and keep the community involved. It's open to anybody that wants to participate. With this location that we are trying to get a hold of, it is a tattoo studio in the back and an art gallery up front. We want to keep it classy and open for people to walk through and experience the art that we create.
We want to have art displayed monthly, also commissioned art by any local business, much like commissioned anything else would be at set periods of time. And also want to be a part of making an art walk night, if not weekly or monthly, with downtown, much like the car show is on Friday nights. We want to do something with art because we believe there's a lot of artists in Garden Grove and surrounding cities that definitely can come down and show their artwork. So the problem we are having now is with the zoning law and the interpretation of that. Currently, it is in the CC2 zoning, which is not pertaining really to any real description of what business uses for it. It's more of a general consensus, mainly talking about the outside building and keep it preserved as far as historical look of, but we're actually not going to do anything to the outsides. All of our business is on the inside, and mainly all of our stuff is wall displayed. So that is... Also, I'm going...
Time's up.
That's all we have.
Okay, good luck, guys. Lee O'Brien. Leo Bryan.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable, uh, council members. My name is Leo Bryan. I work at the Humane Society of the United States, which is the largest animal protection organization in our nation. Tonight I speak on behalf of Lindsay White Dasher, who is Director of Humane Wildlife Conflict Resolution for the HSUS. I'm also speaking on behalf of our constituents in Garden Grove, including those here tonight who are against the killing of coyotes in their community. We urge you to cancel, cancel the coyote trapping and killing program currently underway in Garden Grove and to implement a non-lethal program for resolving conflicts with coyotes instead. Coyote killing programs have proven time and time again to be ineffective for solving problems between coyotes, people, and pets. Research has shown that killed coyotes are quickly replaced by coyotes migrating in from surrounding areas. These coyotes are likely to also become nuisances if the root of the problem, such as food attractants and unattended pets, is not addressed. Additionally, killing coyotes often results in a rebound effect in the population due to compensatory breeding by the remaining individuals. Research has shown that populations of coyotes rebound even when as much as 70% of the population is killed. Programs focusing on education and coyote hazing are much more effective for preventing and solving conflicts with coyotes. Conflicts with coyotes start when they realize that neighborhoods provide easy free sources of food. This can take the form of pet food left outside, unsecured garbage and food scraps, or even direct food handouts from people. Although coyotes primarily eat small mammals such as mice and rats, it is also perfectly natural behavior for them to prey on an outdoor cat or even an unattended, free-roaming small dog. An educational campaign, teaching residents the importance of keeping cats inside, not letting dogs outside unattended, and keeping pet food inside is the best way to tackle these conflicts with coyotes at the source. Coyotes that have been, have become primarily, uh, bold and do not run away when encountering people have become habituated to humans. And in these cases, a technique called hazing is particularly effective. This involves scaring the coyote away by yelling at it and waving your arms, using noise makers such as whistles and air horns, or throwing objects such as tennis balls at the coyote. Coyote hazing changes the behavior of the problematic coyotes and has been used successfully in many communities throughout the country to solve conflicts. The HSUS works with hundreds of communities every year to help design and implement solutions for conflicts between people and wildlife. And we would like very much to work with the city of Garden Grove to do the same. We once again extend our offer to provide coyote hazing training workshops to train police officers, animal control officers, community leaders, and the public in the latest techniques for preventing and solving problems with coyotes. We have worked very successfully with many nearby communities in Southern California, including Long Beach, Huntington Beach, Glendale, Irvine, Costa Mesa, and Rancho Palos Verdes. We would be pleased to assist you in the implementation of an effective and humane program that would solve conflicts in a much more effective, less expensive, and less controversial manner than killing coyotes. We thank you very much for your time and your consideration this evening.
Peter Katz.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and residents. Uh, on behalf of the Vietnam War Museum of America Foundation, once again, I would like to, uh, promote the speaker series that will take place Thursday night, uh, up here at the Courtyard Center. But in my introduction, Monday was Veterans Day and, uh, there were veteran ceremonies all over the country and I chose to go to the city of Irvine and, uh, participate in their veteran ceremony. And it commemorated the 60th anniversary of the Korean War and it commemorated the 40th anniversary of the official end of the Vietnamese War, the Vietnam War. And then listening to the remarks of some of the military officers that were out there and the service members that attended it, I watched those, uh, politicians that attended the event. And the entire city council, when it was over, disappeared with the exception of the mayor. Uh, Stephen Choi is a Korean-American immigrant and he knows the value of service, but I watched him go around that courtyard and shake the hand of every soldier that he could see out there for thanking them for their service. And he came up to me and I said to him, "Mr. Mayor, I don't know you, but I want to thank you for taking the time to thank veterans for their service." And sometimes we take it for granted, veterans make up only 1% of the population, but it takes a special person to be a veteran, to serve this country, because freedom is never free. And we heard about Judge Nguyen tonight and we're going to hear about another Vietnamese, uh, refugee that came to this country. Quang Pham will be our speaker. He's an author of, uh, a book and he will be signing, um, copies of his book. He was a Vietnamese refugee and joined the United States Marine and was decorated with honor. Uh, he's a business, um, he's a business founder and owner, uh, popular public speaker and award-winning author who has appeared on numerous radio and television shows offering reflections on Vietnam. His book, A Sense of Duty, traces Quang's uniquely sprint, is uniquely inspired yet agonizing journey from his experiences as an uprooted refugee to become United States Marine Corps combat aviator and reveals the turmoil of a family torn apart and then reunited by the fortunes of war. So come and listen to his story at the Courtyard Center, Thursday night, November 14th, at 6:30 PM. That's 12732 Main Street in Garden Grove. It's $10 per person, but free for veterans and active militoody, military personnel. And come support a veteran and help, uh, us build this museum that will tell the true story of the Vietnamese refugees, the soldier that fought in Vietnam, and the South Vietnamese soldiers that gave it all for freedom, because freedom is never free. And I asked, uh, Stephen Choi what, uh, why he did what he did. And he said, "When you read the United States Constitution as an immigrant, when you're studying for your citizenship, it tells you in the Constitution of the United States to thank soldiers for their service." So on behalf of all soldiers, uh, please come out and support us. Thank you.
Bill Waldron.
Mayor Broadwater and council, I appreciate your time and, uh, you've allowed me to have here tonight to speak a lot on what the previous speaker did. I want to present a couple of issues, uh, before the, uh, council, uh, tonight and probably are twofold. And one of them is that, uh, it's an issue about the handicap placards that we have veterans and other handicapped people have that get cited on street sweeping day. I made the effort to go to all of the surrounding cities and ask of their policies. And I went to Cypress. They have no exemption for street sweeping days. They give the citations. I went to Buena Park. They give short-term, uh, exemptions. I went to Orange, they have no exempt policy for the placard. I went to Santa Ana, they have an exempt policy for handicapped placards in the windows. I went to Anaheim, they have a exempt policy for vehicles with the placard. I went to Stanton, they have a non-exempt policy, but they don't enforce it. They do not give citations to handicapped pla- placards. And, uh, again, because of the military, I'm a veteran and this past week has brought me to, uh, think a lot about our disabled veterans. I watch the Military Channel and it's, it's not good. And these veterans that put down their lives and other veterans who didn't go to the war and get arms and legs and that post-traumatic syndrome, it's probably worse than some of the physical problems that came out of the war. Every one of the soldiers during wartime put their lives at jeopardy for this country. With this in mind, these veterans come back wounded, not right in their minds, gave their all for. They take up 10 feet of space in front of their house. It's going to cost you $51, soldier. It's hard for me to take. It's hard for me to understand. And also, that also includes, uh, other handicapped people who have enough on their plate without having to find a way to get their vehicles out of, uh, the way. That becomes very difficult. And, uh, I know that these veterans, many of them also come back with other things wrong in their lives. Not only that, they have mental problems, broken families, all kinds of problems that I think need to be addressed. There's very little, very little that many of us can do for these people, both handicapped and also, uh, military. And it's really hard for me to, during especially the past week, to think through these things. I'm not much of a public speaker, as you can tell, it's hard for me, but this is an issue I couldn't, uh, I couldn't pass up. And I know that governing bodies, such as we have in Garden Grove, have a code of ethics. And this code of ethics, I know from this governing body, has moral principles and values.
Bill, you've run out of time. Why don't we take his issue and move it to the Traffic Commission? Let them take a look at it.
They sent, uh, Your Honor, they sent me over here.
They sent you over here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We'll send you back. Okay. Okay, good luck. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. I think it is entirely appropriate that you had a special event to honor Judge Nguyen. First time I've.
Kingsley, can you turn the light off, please?
Thank you. I was afraid I'd have to get sit down. First time I met, uh, Judge Nguyen, he almost threw me in jail. For over five years, I volunteered as a mediator in small claims court at West Court. And small claims cases are at the bottom of the rung when it comes to the court agenda. Now, our responsibility as mediators is not to decide what the law is. Our job is to see what the two parties can agree on and, uh, follow through with. Many times, people will sue for money because that's the only thing they can do in small claims court. But what they really want is some kind of accommodation. Many times, all they want is an apology for some wrongdoing by the other party. That's what mediators do, is work with the two parties to see if we can reach an agreement that settles the problem. Well, they used to have commissioners to hear small claims, but then they got away with commissioners and promoted them to judges. And what they would have is judges pro tem. These are attorneys that have, uh, practiced law for a number of years and asked to volunteer to serve as judges at small claims court. And I've known many of them and they're wonderful people, put in their time to do this. But on this one occasion, there were no pro tems available. Now Judge Nguyen, like the other Superior Court judges, have their calendars full of really serious cases, murder cases, robbery. They're talking about putting people away for years or the rest of their lives. But when no pro tems are available, they go through the calendar of judges and say, "Okay, this one will go do small claims." I think it was the first time that Judge Nguyen had ever sat in small claims court. And I had a particular case that was a bit unusual. And the only way that I could resolve it was writing out all the terms that the two parties agreed to. And they were both happy with it. They said, "Yes, that's fine with us." So I took the agreement back up to the courtroom, presented it to the bailiff, he gave it to the clerk. Judge Nguyen called the case up. He looked at it and he said, "This is unacceptable. Who wrote this up?" "I did, Your Honor." "I want you in my chambers." So I went back to his chambers and he says, "Are you a lawyer?" I said, "No." He said, "Well, you're trying to write law." I said, "No, I'm not." I said, "This is the terms that these two people volunteered to agree to. Has nothing to do with, uh, the law. It has to do with two parties coming to an agreement." Well, he finally accepted that and went back to court and he approved the agreement. But after that point, he had a different perspective of what small claims is about. And we became very good friends. And I was honored tonight to be able to applaud, uh, the special recognition that the city gave him. Thank you.
Josh McIntosh.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City of Garden Grove. I'm going to be kind of all over the place tonight, I'm sorry. First off, I'd like to, uh, extend my thanks to all of our veterans and, uh, some of our council here who have served. Audience members, thank you all very much. Um, on that note, I'd like to bring up another event that's coming up Thursday, November the 21st. Uh, save the date for a salute to our veterans. We'll have special guest Jack Hammett of U.S. Navy, Pearl Harbor survivor. This is going to be in Santa Ana at the Community Room of the Santa Ana Police Department. Parking will be validated, so you know how hard it is to get parking down there? That's a plus. There will be flyers outside the room. Also, I'd like to thank the gentlemen who are interested in opening up a tattoo and art parlor on, uh, Main Street Garden Grove. I think that's something that would be good for our community, increase foot traffic and something realistic that would attract, uh, people down there. So gentlemen, like they said, good luck with that. On another item, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Chris Fan and his wife Cindy. Uh, congratulations on the wedding. We were all there together. Um, great day, Chris, and thanks for buying in Garden Grove when you selected. You're DJ. Thank you. Uh, I'd also like to thank the council for my appointment to the Parks, Recreation, and Art Commission. Uh, sorry I wasn't here to get that live in person, but, uh, sometimes these meetings do get old and I get to leave before you. I look forward to working with the city and doing my part to introduce new events and activities for our residents. Thank you very much. It's quite an honor. Also, I would like to thank, uh, Mayor Broadwater for. Also, I would like to thank Mayor Broadwater for opening up the Garden Grove Indie Film Festival about three weeks ago or so. Although we didn't have the turnout from our community this year that I wish we would have had, I recognize where we need to improve our marketing promotion to get people out and involved to do the great things when they're offered to them in the city. The filmmakers were all really happy. The bands were really excited to play in the park. We just need to get more people out there next time, that's for sure. I wanted to give a special thanks to city staff, Heidi Janz, Patricia Hayes, Janet Pallio, and Kimberly Hui for their time and effort. I know we couldn't have pulled it off without all of their hard work as well. If I had the funds, I would have had nice Oscar-style awards to give to them because they went above and beyond to make sure our event happened. And let's see, I keep getting all these little things passed to me. You know, I think the main thing that went wrong with the Indie Fest was that our logo was a coyote. So that probably didn't help too much. But again, thanks for the city for all your support and look forward to the 2014 event. Thank you.
Robin Marcario.
Hello, council, city staff, and Garden Grove residents. I'm Robin Marcario. I just also wanted to make a quick plug for the Reimagine Downtown Garden Grove. If you go to the city website, there's an icon, you just click on it, and it's a really wonderful resource for soliciting the suggestions of the public so that we can kind of give you our two bits on how we think that you might be able to improve our city. And we really appreciate that. I think that's a wonderful resource. Once again, it's Reimagine Downtown Garden Grove. Just go to the city website and let them know what your thoughts on how we can improve things. I was also glad to see that the council has submitted a time limit to fix the Garden Grove Galleria. It's been a rusty skeleton of a building, and we're certainly looking forward to seeing that turned into an actual building. I know the legal disparities between the developer and the bank are finally resolved, and now we can hopefully move forward within the next year or so. My last issue or comment is I just wanted to thank Councilmember Steve Jones. He's our representative for OCTA, Orange County Transportation Authority, and I had sent him an email, and as usual, he's always very good about replying. There's an important issue coming up for OCTA on December 9th. There will be a decision with regards to the 405 freeway. And there's a couple of alternatives that are out there. Alternative number two is to add two general purpose lanes. Those are lanes that all of us could use. We've paid our Measure M half-cent sales tax for those lanes, and we hope that you will in fact vote for the two additional lanes. Steve, I'm glad that. And the last alternative for that, OCTA, is alternative three, which would take our carpool lane and add an additional lane, and those would be toll lanes. We would have to pay for the use of those lanes on the 405 freeway. And I know I've talked with my friends and neighbors, and it is an extremely unpopular idea. We don't want toll lanes, and I have full faith and confidence, Steve, that you will vote with the public. You know, next year is an election year, and we hope that you'll vote for alternate two. Two general purpose lanes keep our freeways free. Oh, I have a number where they can call you. Shall we do that? That'll be fun. Steve Jones' number where you can call and leave a message, and he is very good about calling back, is the city council clerk, a really wonderful lady, and her number is So call and leave a message, and Steve will give you a return call. Once again, that number, 714-741-5104. So let Steve know. Keep our freeways free. Thank you.
I think I ought to give everybody Robin's number. Melanie Shaw.
I am a lifetime resident of Garden Grove, and I'm also a homeowner. And I'm here to ask you to please reconsider the trapping and killing of the coyotes. You know, we're a city that's surrounded by wildlife, and we need to learn to coexist with the coyotes. And with the building of the freeway and more construction, it's taken away their natural habitat. So of course they're going to come into the city looking for food. It's only natural. They're scavengers. They need to eat. But to trap and kill them is just inhumane, and it's wrong. And maybe a couple solutions, maybe trap and release like we do with feral cats. Trap them, fix them, send them back to the same location. Maybe that will stop the breeding. Maybe we could have regulated feedings in their certain habitats and maybe keep them in a certain area, you know, with regulated feeding so they have a place, you know, to go, so they don't have to come out into the city. Last year, I went to the Huntington Beach City Council, and there was a vote on this very issue with the coyotes. And it came down to where they decided to educate and not pursue the killing. And as a resident of Garden Grove, I'm asking you to please follow their lead and please reconsider, because I feel ashamed to be part of a city that will condone killing of its wildlife when we should be protecting the wildlife and taking care of them, because we, as the humans, are the ones destroying their habitat. So it's up to us to take care of the wildlife. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm a resident of Garden Grove for the past six years, and I'm a teacher and teach in Placentia, California. I also want to speak to you about the coyote issue. Apparently, from what I've heard tonight, and this is a new issue that I just heard about a few days ago, that the vote to trap and kill coyotes was a three to two vote. And so I also would like you to reconsider. Now, you've heard from the representative from the Humane Society that apparently there are alternative methods which can solve the problem without killing the coyotes. But I want to take a little different tact here. I want to talk about compassion and empathy. Most of you probably have pets, or if you have, no pets now, at least one time in your life you've had pets. If you've had pets, you know that they suffer fear, that they suffer pain, and that they respond to human kindness, just as we do. Coyotes are no different. The other animals that we share this planet with are no different. You know, that this is a God-given planet to all creatures. All creatures have a right to survive here. Their habitat is being destroyed, not only the coyote habitat, but we human beings are destroying many things on this planet. We've created many things, and we're destroying many things. You have a chance to develop more compassion inside yourself and reverse your vote. Too often, we want to solve our problems like with a sledgehammer, that we want a quick, short-term solution, and often that involves things like violence and things like killing, and we think, oh, we'll just get rid of the problem that way. If we look at those kind of things, we usually don't get rid of the problems that way. Actually, sometimes we even make the problems worse. So I'm asking you to think, how would you feel being pursued, being attacked, being killed, either by guns or knives or whatever methods? All animals share the same kind of fear, the same kind of pain. Try a different method. If the other method doesn't work, you can always reconsider again. But don't go first for the killing. Don't go first for the pain. Don't go first for the violence. Look inside your heart, think about empathy, and think about compassion for other creatures that we share this planet with. Thank you.
I talked at the last meeting regarding the coyotes. My parents and my husband's parents had taught us growing up that we should respect the wildlife, respect animals. And I have personally in my life. I've backpacked in Yosemite, 30 miles on the John Muir Trail, enjoyed wildlife, but to come home to my neighborhood in West Garden Grove and have people vote to kill wildlife is unacceptable. What are we teaching our kids? That violence is okay? I would like you guys to know what happened on the site, on the Neighborhood Watch site after the meeting. A lot of people were saying that they were going to get their guns out and shoot them if they see them. That's not good. That leads to problems, other problems. What are we exposing people to? A lady was also walking her dog down on the street on a leash. Someone came running out yelling at coyotes. She said that if she had a gun in her hand, she would shoot her dog because she thought it was a coyote. It's not right. We should treat our animals with respect. They don't have someone to speak for them, but we are going to speak for them. They should not deserve to be killed, trapped, or anything. They should stay where they are. We have seen studies. I do a lot of research on everything, going to school right now. It's not the answer. Everywhere says it's not the answer. We should change our vote. Thank you.
My name is Lumie Surrall. I'm a West Garden Grove resident. I'd like to also speak about the coyote issue. Mr. Chris Beard, Mr. Chris Fan, we've already kind of swapped ideas at our last Neighborhood Watch meeting, and I do thank you for taking the time out to come out to our community meetings. So important to see you there, for your support. What more can I add? We've had wonderful speakers on our behalf tonight. I have personally started a Facebook page, a small little one, with the supporters of wildlife. I'd like to go further with other wildlife once we decide what we're going to do with the coyotes. There are quite a lot of members that are concerned with our wildlife. It is very important for our ecosystem to remain as it is. We need to save our coyotes. They are good for our community. I believe that instead of spending money on trapping and killing, therefore violence, which, just like Jessica said, what are we teaching our children? I know my little children are very upset about seeing that there could possibly be violence in our neighborhoods, that we could possibly come across a trap, and my small Shih Tzu dog could possibly get caught in it. And not just that, but they do care for the coyotes. So instead of spending money for euthanizing, let's spend money on educating. I don't care how many coyotes we're going to kill out there. We're going to continue having coyotes. They multiply a lot faster. And they're going to come right back to our neighborhoods. We get rid of one family from one track, it's open land for the others. New family comes in. Next season, they multiply even faster at a faster rate because they go into, you know, emergency mode where they have to multiply a lot faster. They're very intelligent animals. So we need to learn, all of us as a community. We need to learn about their behavior. We need to understand their behavior. We need to understand that they are very important to our neighborhoods. They get rid of rodents. We're going to have a bigger problem with rodents if we do get rid of coyotes for right now. So therefore, we have to spend more tax money on getting rid of rodents, which do a lot more damage. Those we cannot control as easy as a coyote. Hazing is very easy. Learning how not to put food out our small pets, we should be watching small pets anyway. There's hawks, there's all different other types of wildlife that we need to protect our small pets against. And, you know, I hate to say it, we started a wonderful Neighborhood Watch site on Facebook in February, and as soon as this issue was brought to 1,800 members, unfortunately, it created paranoia. So I believe a lot of the people that showed up at this meeting where the vote was passed, they presented fear. So this vote was probably, you know, influenced by fear. I would have liked to see more people on both sides learning, you know, about coyotes together and educating each other and pushing for education. So maybe we can get some flyers out in our utility bills, start with that. Our West Garden Grove community is very willing to pass out flyers. We've been doing a wonderful job at passing out flyers, having our meetings, having wildlife present there to educate as many as we can, but we're not going to be able to reach the whole community that way. I don't feel it's a threat to our community. I feel that we just need to be, to learn to live with it. Thank you.
At this time, we'll close oral communications. We will recess and conduct the successor agency business.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's call the November 12th meeting of the Successor Agency to order. Madam Furt, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Member Fan.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here.
We already did oral communications simultaneously with city council, so we will move on to consent items. Just the warrants.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
What he said.
Motion received, five yes votes.
No public hearings. Items for consideration, item 4A.
Mr. Chairman, item 4A is a resolution to consider approving refunding of the 2003 tax allocation bonds. And Jim Delalong is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Successor Agency. The item you have before you for consideration this evening is a resolution authorizing and approving the refinancing of the 2003 tax allocation bonds. On August 14th, 2013, you considered a similar item as part of the comprehensive plan of finance for the successor agency. This contemplated refinancing the 2003 tabs in conjunction with issuing bonds for the water park hotel obligation. That item was approved by the Oversight Board and sent to the Department of Finance for approval. It was subsequently denied by the Department of Finance, and in the denial letter, the DOF cited that the successor agency combined two actions that should have been approved separately. This item is before you as a result of that DOF determination. Here, we have separated the refinancing of the 2003 tabs from the bonds that will ultimately fund the water park enforceable obligation. This resolution approves a refinancing of the 2003 tabs pursuant to dissolution law in order to provide savings to the various taxing entities. The savings are significant over the existing term of the bonds. The financial analysis performed by Springstead Incorporated indicates that refinancing the 2003 tabs will yield a net present value benefit of over 10%, which translates into about $4.6 million in net present value savings. This authorizing resolution also includes approval to assemble the financial team that will prepare and move the bond issue forward. Staff recommends at this time that the successor agency adopt the attached resolution authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds for the 2003 tax allocation bonds. Authorize the director to transmit said resolution to the Oversight Board for approval. Authorize the director to execute a contract with Springstead Incorporated and appoint same as the successor agency's financial advisor for this assignment as described herein. Authorize the director to appoint Stradling, Yoka, Carson, and Ralph as the bond counsel for this assignment as described herein. And authorize the director or his designated to enter into all other necessary agreements to assemble the financing team, including underwriter, trustee, fiscal agent, et cetera, to effectively ready the issuance of the refunding bonds. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions, staff?
See and none. Just want to comment, I mean, great relentless effort to keep driving the agenda forward and stay in front of DOF and get these things through as we have been, so good work on that. I'd like to go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Any matters? See and none, we're adjourned back to council.
Okay, let's go back to the council. We'll reconvene. We have consent items.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I voted on this matter as a planning commissioner, so to avoid any appearance of conflict, I'd like to recuse myself on this item.
Anybody interested in making a motion on 6J?
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Public hearing, seven.
Mr. Mayor, 7A is a public hearing to consider amendment to Title 18 of the Municipal Code, essentially adopting the 2013 building codes. And Mike Austin will be here to give the staff report on this item shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The State's Health and Safety Code establishes that the Building Standards Code, Title 24, as published by the California Building Standards Commission every three years, is the applicable code for all occupancies throughout the state. The Building Standards Commission published the 2013 California Building Standards Code on July 1st, 2013, and it becomes effective January 1st, 2014. The proposed modifications, which impose more stringent building standards than the state code, are intended to increase the safety to life and property from fire and other hazards. Most of the proposed modifications are carried over from previous code adoptions, and there's no financial impact to the city. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council hold a public hearing for consideration of the California Building Standards Code, 2013 edition, and certain uniform codes, along with the findings supporting the respective amendments. Introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, adopting the 2013 California Codes with modifications that reads as follows. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove amending Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code and adopting by reference the following primary codes with certain amendment, deletions, and additions thereto. California Building Code, 2013 edition, California Residential Code, 2013 edition, California Electrical Code, 2013 edition, California Mechanical Code, 2013 edition, and California Plumbing Code, 2013 edition, California Energy Code, 2013 edition, California Fire Code, 2013 edition, California Green Building Standards Code, 2013 edition, and certain secondary codes, including the International Property Maintenance Code, 2012 edition, as published by the International Code Council, and the Uniform Swimming Pool Spa and Hot Tub Code, 2012 edition, as published by the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials, and set a public hearing for November 26, 2013, for the city council to act on adoption of the ordinance. This concludes the staff report, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Public hearing first.
Oh, public hearing, yes. We won't entertain a motion. At this time, we'll open up a public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Now, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
A second, then one.
Have a motion approved, and we have a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we have no commission or committee matters. Items for consideration, none. Matters from the mayor, city council members, and city manager. Mr. Chris Beard.
Yeah, I'd also like to extend my thanks to all the veterans and remembrance and their legacy and all that they've given. And one of our resolutions tonight was the Red Shirt Fridays, so to continue the legacy of honoring those, I encourage all those to wear red shirts on Friday. I think that's a great tribute, and I'm glad the city has done that and put that proclamation forward. Another item I'd like to comment on, I was at a Neighborhood Watch meeting in West Garden Grove, as was Councilman Fawn, and we did hear the same topic of coyotes, which took up a lot of the agenda for the Neighborhood Watch. And I just want to emphasize, unfortunately, a lot of the members have already left, the speakers, but we have intended, my understanding was, we have a comprehensive, we are moving forward with education as well as a contract to pursue troublesome or situations, potentially dangerous situations, but also doing an assessment of the city. So, some of the speakers presented it as such that we're only trapping, hunting and trapping those coyotes, but that's only a very small portion, as I would put it. Education's the key, comprehensive approach, and that's what we're taking. So, I just wanted to emphasize that, and to my knowledge, we have not hunted and captured any coyotes, but we are doing our due diligence and assessment of the situation. We have an expert doing that right now. So, I wish they would have been here to hear that as well, but education's the key, first and foremost, in this whole program that we're undertaking. Thank you.
Dana.
Yes, thank you to all the veterans who have served this country, especially for those who've sacrificed their lives and to uphold the freedom that we all enjoyed. I especially thank the Vietnam vets who have served in Vietnam and tried their very best. And I ask that all of the families who have veterans coming back from the Middle East that they would have an open mind to the mental issues that these young men are coming back with, and they need a lot of patience and a lot of love and understanding, and a lot of times, they don't want to talk to you or for you to be part of what they're going through. Have patience and tell them that you're there for them, and there are groups out there that they can join, but mostly, they need your understanding to keep their sanity and to keep their family. And on the last note, we're in November, heading towards the holiday. Please remember to buy in Garden Grove and celebrate in Garden Grove.
Chris.
Thanks, sir. Again, I wanted to emphasize, happy Veterans Day to everyone. It was very touching. I attended the ceremony that was held at the mayor's church. Very touching and moving ceremony. I too want to echo what Dana said about thanking all of our veterans. Also, I want to just thank and recognize Mr. Nicholas Beard, one of our young Eagle Scouts, the newest Eagle Scouts in Garden Grove. I was under the mistaken impression that he was related to Councilman Chris Beard, but when I got there, it was not the case. But again, Nicholas, congratulations on a job well done. And lastly, thank everyone from our city and our staff for being at my wedding to support Cindy and me. We're very honored to be a part of the family. And unfortunately, when we made our honeymoon plans, we did not realize that on the 26th of November, we'll have a meeting. So, I think probably my first and only time to miss a council meeting next time, but I do apologize because I can't cancel the ticket we bought about five months ago. Thank you very much.
If I may, Mayor, you know, you can't plan when the baby comes either.
We try.
Just a belated thanks to all the veterans who serve our great country and protect us out there, and then also just big congratulations to Chris Phan and his new bride. That was a, thanks for including all of us in that, on your special day. It was a very beautiful backdrop and a fun getaway and a fun little adventure to go down to San Diego and enjoy that with you guys, so thanks.
I really enjoyed going to Chris's wedding. There were a lot of sailors there, just without a doubt, and quite a few of them wore their, the officers wore their blue off, the blue uniform with the gold around it. And my wife said, gee, you've got a lot of fire chiefs here. And so, I really enjoyed that. Peggy's probably watching now, thinking, I'll get him when he gets home. But anyway, it was a great wedding, and I thank you for inviting me, and we had a good time. R.C. Gall passed away this last week. He was a guy who was involved in a lot of things around the city. He was president of the Strawberry Festival. He was president of the nighttime Kiwanis a number of times. He was a member of the Elks. He was a member of, you're going to love this, he was a member of the SC marching band when he was a young man. He was a lieutenant in the Navy during World War II. He was a, he's been a fellow Kiwanian with me for, actually, I've been a fellow Kiwanian with him. He was there for the last 25, 30 years. So, we're going to miss him. He was 93 years old, and he lived a good life, and he was really a good man, a good father, good husband, and I certainly am going to miss him. With that, I think we will close the meeting up until Tuesday, November 26, 2013, at 5:30 PM. With or without, Chris?